Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a regular school board meeting of our twice a year school board. Tonight is Monday, September 12th, and it is 6:00 PM. So I will call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call finds all present. So now I will turn it over to Jean. She'll do our truth and taxation portion of the meeting.
And it's on the board book. Marsha, if you want to open it and I can't see this screen.
Marsha, can you see the part?
I can't see it?
I can.
Can you?
I can't see the screen, but I can take the clicker.
You.
Sure, everybody wants to see. I can see it.
Oh, there we go. Okay, good. I can at least see this.
Oh, no, this is her friend.
This will be just fine. Well, thanks, everyone. Nice to have an audience for the taxation night. You were here for something else, but you'll learn about the levy, so I'll try to go time fast. So we're here tonight for the truth and taxation public meeting for our P-23 levy. How do I?
I can use you.
Click inside the page. There you go.
You can click the new one inside there. Or you have to roll on the light side there.
I can't see.
Maybe you need something underneath your.
I don't want to do it on top of this.
It was just working for me. Is it too far from the computer?
Yeah, you're too far away.
Bring it here.
Maybe I'll just run it for me.
I can do that.
Thanks. Excited to have the packet this year, but okay. There's the agenda. Great. Thank you. Okay, so on our agenda, there's a few things we have to cover as part of the state statute under truth and taxation law. So in order that for cities, counties, and school districts have to take certain steps before adopting a levy. So the requirements are to mail a notice to each property owner in the county and then also to hold a public meeting. So everyone has that in the mail. So we've hit that requirement, and then we're here tonight to meet the second requirement.
Scroll down.
So scroll down.
Hold down.
You can keep going, please. And one more. So we're on to the levy limitation and certification portion of the presentation. So there's variables that cause property taxes to increase or decrease. So there can be changes in assessed market value classifications or class rates. An assessed value of a property may increase or decrease. The assessed value of other properties may increase or decrease, and the total number of properties may increase. So all three of these are likely happening in our tax base. But what really matters for an individual property is the share of the total tax base, so how those changes impact that property's share of the total tax base. There's changes in state funding formulas that could impact the increase or decrease in levy amounts, and then changes in property tax credits. And let's then so a reminder about the cycle that we're in. So this levy will be certified in the year 2022. It'll be paid by taxpayers in 2023, and it will partially be part of our funding for the 23, 24 school year. So you go down one more. And then this shows the levy by fund. So the amount of the P-23 levy is $7,439,102, which is an increase of $348,560. And you can see the breakdown by fund. The general education fund and the community service fund have very minimal changes. The bulk of the driver of the increase in the levy is in the debt service fund, and we'll talk about that specifically on the next page or coming up here. So this slide is a little bit hard to read, but this presentation does go on the website as well for people to access. But this is a breakdown of what makes up the levy, not just the change in the levy. So people can see what are the different amounts that we levy for. It is split like all school finance by fund. So it's kind of like bucket, and we have rules about what we can spend in each of these classifications. So they're kind of laid out there. School districts are different than cities and counties in that it's basically set up by formula. There are very few things that are not that are controllable within the levy beyond a formula. So it's different than a city or county that would set a dollar amount and then levy that dollar amount. These are formula-driven determinations. We'll keep going. So the main driver of the P-23 increase is the 2022 A bond. So that is an LTFM bond in the amount of $5,285,000. Its planned uses deferred maintenance and indoor air quality projects at three TCU sites. It is split between two LTFM designations. Deferred maintenance is 2.2 million of that total, and that is tax neutral or borrowing against future LTFM revenue. And then the indoor air quality piece for 3.1 million does increase the district levy. So the residential impact of this is what we expected when this was discussed in July. It's about $48 a year on a $200,000 home. So and we're going to talk a little bit more about like how what changes we're seeing to assessed values. But it really, like I was saying, it matters what a property changed relative to other properties. So if a property was assessed, changed greater than the average, you'd see a larger impact. Less than the average, you see a lower impact. So it's all just how it's split. And then ag property, but actually see a reduction because of the ag school tax credit that increased from 60 to 70%. And then there was a disproportionate increase in assessed value on residential properties. I have a slide to kind of show that a little bit more later. So there's the levy history in the most recent years for TCU and the 4.9% increase in P-23. The next slide is an example statement. So this is actually from last year, but it looks really similar just to show people where to see the school portion of taxes on a tax statement and then also where to see the tax credit if it's an ag property. So you can see that specifically. So if we go to the next one, we'll talk about the tax base and the P-23 impact. So there's two methods to calculate the tax base, net tax capacity and revenue or residential market value, and both had growth. And so for the, just a reminder on TCU, the debt portion of school taxpayers, the taxpayer obligation will vary based on the former district, preconsolidation. And so there's two reasons that a tax base would grow, and that's either driven by growth in new properties. So I've laid out the new single-family homes. This is in 2021 between Montgomery, the TCU, Sidle, Lonsdale, and Will Center. And also in reassessment of property values. So we are seeing some properties have assessed value increased significantly in this pay tax base year. So for the total district, we're seeing an average of 19% assessed value increases. And then in former ISD 394, it's at 20%. And then for former ISD 392, it's at 15%. So they average up to 19% on the rest of the district. So these growth factors impact a property's share of the total tax base. If you go down the next slide, just to make sure it's really clear, that our levy, TCU's levy for P-23, is 7.4 million. And that levy is capped at the amount approved by the board and limited by state statute calculations. So tax-based growth by either increase in the number of properties or in the assessed value of properties does not affect the total amount levy by the district. So the change in assessed market value of individual property only affects the split of the levy between properties. So I know that can be confusing for people. They see they're paying more, they think that school is getting more, but the total amount of the school is getting is capped at that amount. So just want to make sure that's really clear for taxpayers. This one shows the tax base composition change that we're seeing. So residential portions of the tax base grew 10% as a result of reassessment. So if you think about our total tax base, last year, residential portion of that was 46%. That bottom blue, I don't know, half circle rainbow. So that was the residential portion of our tax base last year. And this year, it's estimated to be 55, almost 56%. So the ag portion decreased and the residential portion increased. Go down one more. And then the ag school tax credit is now increased to 70%, up from 60% last year. That's a credit on all existing and future school bonds. It's been climbing annually, and it will now remain at 70%, and there is no end date. As a result, that credit increase ag properties see a larger credit than the prior year, all other things equal. This is listed on tax statements. And then just making sure that I, the slide is from last year, but I added a bullet just to make sure that it was really clear that this credit is funded by the state and not by other local levy taxpayers. So the increase, the ag school tax credit, does not directly increase the portion of the levy for other taxpayers. That is, I'm going to pause because that is the levy portion of this presentation, and then we have to do a quick, have to cover the budget as well. That's one of the requirements. So does anyone have a question on the levy or the drivers? If anybody did, it gets really specific by property type, by assessed value, which former district you live in and everything. So I have had people call, and I've gotten online with a financial advisor, and we've talked through that stuff. They have generally been like positive constructive conversations, so that option is open. Everybody has my phone number because it's on the tax statement, so no one ever wants to text me about it. It's kind of a lonely thing, so. Call me. Okay, so let's. Oh, should I just say, this is year 23. You can tell I reuse my slides. So our this year 23 adopted budget, I have it broken down by fund. So for revenue, it's estimated to be $30,758,917. And then the pie chart on the right just kind of shows the source of the funding for the general fund. So 80% of what we have for like the main operations of the school is coming from the state. About 11 and 1/2% is coming from the levy that we're talking about tonight, and then the remainder comes from federal or from other local income. So we're highly dependent upon the state for funding. We switch to the expenditure side. You can see those totals on there, split by fund again. And then on the right side in the pie chart is again just the fund one, but that will show you that we have, our large, by far, our largest expense is staff as a service business. That's what we would expect. And then seconded being purchase service, and really that would mostly be transportation. A large chunk of that is transportation. Great, so we'll go to the resolution. This is what will come before the board later in the meeting to give the school levy approval or levy authority. So this is the piece that will be read, and it will, if approved, then the levy for next year would be $7,439,101.61. That concludes my presentation, but there's a bunch of additional information in the appendix if people are interested, including like our debt schedule and the debt breakdown of each bond that we have, some tax category, tax growth information. So again, if anybody had questions on a specific property, they would be welcome to contact me.
There's a lot of stuff here, Jean.
I know. Someone can call me and talk about it. I was kidding. Yeah. And that'll be posted on the website, and it's on board book already, so. Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
Thanks for writing that for me, Marsha.
You bet. Almost. All right, we have our administrative reports.
Perfect. So our principals will be speaking about their school, so it looks like Tony Johnson from TCU or Lonsdale is coming first.
Members of the board and Superintendent Babcock, thank you for letting us share and kind of give a winter update of where we're at in the buildings. Jeff, Lisa, and I have kind of talked together about some main points that we really wanted to share with you guys to showcase some of the things that we're proud of and some of the things that we're striving to do. And so we're each going to take, similar to what we've done in the past, each take a little summary of something we think is important, and we'll kind of go down the line because we're pretty unified in our building. So we're a little bit more passionate when we get to speak about one thing that pertains to all of us. And I'll be starting with just family engagement. It feels really good this year. As I say, we probably had more people in all of our buildings this year alone than the last two years combined, so it's been really cool to see families and their students and parents interacting on different activities that they're doing, whether it's for their classroom, for whole school events. Conferences just finished up a little bit ago. That seems to be a huge strength at our elementary levels. We've had in the 90% or above, sometimes to high 90s, of positive attendance, and it's showing that families really value that one-to-one connection time and how we have it at the K-6 level, which has been great to see. All of us had a Veterans Day program where it was great to welcome veterans into our schools and for students to get to learn a little bit more about our country, as well as say thank you to some of those members who have served. Our band and choir are getting into the heat of their performances. Lonsdale's had one of theirs, and I believe you guys have a couple coming up here and may have already had one, and the students were blown away that they got to perform on that stage in there, which was just fantastic, and hopefully that keeps students engaged in our musical arts programming. We've tried to be visible in the community, whether it's at chamber meetings as well, to stay involved with what's going on in our community and to share all the good things that are going on in our school as local businesses talk to one another, too. And hopefully that's a good avenue for when they get to the high school for different opportunities that they can engage in the community with. We look forward to seasonal parties coming up, and it's sometimes just welcoming families into our school just to celebrate and have fun, is some of the most fun times. And then all of us are striving to start some type of guest, our community speaker who comes into our schools. So when students are out in the community, they know who that person is, they know what their job is, and they can make that connection to maybe something that sparks an interest and they want to be. So that's some of the things that we're striving for, I guess, when it comes to family engagement are some of the things that we're proud of.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about professional development, which is obviously a key component of what our educators are doing, pretty consistent across the district as well. This year, if you hear educators talking, you might hear them talk about and use the words first five, last five, and Dr. Bernard has really been leading us into this work, really making sure the first five and last five minutes of every lesson are really strong and really meaningful. There's kind of three main components of that, and that is learning intentions or learning targets, making sure all the students know exactly what they should be learning, how they know if they're going to be successful, what do they need to do to demonstrate that. Sometimes we take that for granted and make assumptions, but it's really important that we're clearly communicating that with students. Low-stakes writing, or sometimes called quick writes, and that's just really getting kids writing in every lesson, even if it's something quick. It doesn't have to be graded, but really making sure kids are having an opportunity to process what they're learning, to think about their thinking, to get their ideas down, even in math, right? Even in science, it's really important to do that. And then the last one is in academic conversations, and that's just really giving kids the tools and the structure and the opportunity to engage in conversations with a partner, groups. There's a lot of different ways to get the whole class talking, but we really want the kids writing and talking and knowing what they're learning about in the first five minutes, and then also being meaningful with how we wrap up that lesson at the end, wrapping up. Did we learn what we intended to learn? Can we reflect on what we learned today? Let's have a conversation about it. So that's been a lot of our professional development this year, which has been really fun to see. Our most recent early release, we were digging into that more with our teachers, super high engagement from our staff, really digging into that. And then connected with that, our teachers are engaged in CLTs every Tuesday, collaborative learning teams, and that's with their grade level or with their department. But this year, we also created instructional strategies groups, and they meet with those groups less often, and those are mixed groups. So, you know, different grade levels, different departments, and it's been so cool to see educators grouped in those kind of non-traditional ways, making connections, realizing like, wow, I'm a seventh grade science teacher, and I just learned something awesome from this first grade colleague that maybe I don't interact with a lot, but there's a lot really to learn from one another. So teachers are diving into these first five, last five strategies via these instructional playbooks that Dr. Bernard has built that are just full of articles and videos and resources, and so teachers are engaged in this learning. And then once a month, they come to their instructional strategies team, and they share what they've learned, what they've tried, what they're noticing from their students, the questions they have, what are we going to carry forward. So if you were to come around to any of our buildings tomorrow morning, you'll see these teachers sitting in the media centers in these instructional strategies groups, and it's really, really been cool to see. So just kind of tying it all together. So that's been a big focus of our professional development so far this year.
And to piggyback off of that, Dr. Bernard, when he came in, was pushing some of these things, and it aligns really well with the Avid work that we had started and been doing for the past seven or eight years here now. And so when we talk about the first five minutes of a classroom and really digging into a learning target, I mean, that's one of the prime pillars, I guess, of Avid and also having these academic conversations. So we're able to really start to see some of those different silos that we had built throughout our school system as we became one, really starting to all come together and everything linked together. So to go along with that, we've also made some shifts in our evaluation process, and we've really tried to move to more of a coaching model for our faculty. We've all recognized the hours, Allen included, that we spent putting in trying to hire staff last summer, and then trying to get staff on board and trying to bring them up to speed to what we want. And so, and with the staffing shortage, the unemployment rate that is extremely low right now, we are really dedicated to really doing all we can to help grow our own staff and continue to help them grow and learn and make shifts in what they're doing in areas that they want to move on. And so that's really all coming together. And so when Dr. Bernard came in and Superintendent Babcock recommended that we move to more of a coaching model for an administrative and evaluative process, I think that all aligned really well with where we sit in terms of wanting to be coaches and helpers rather than you're fired, you're hired, you need to do this. It's more of a, hey, let's work on this. Let's meet back in a couple weeks and talk about how it's been going and really start to make progress there. And so we're really, I think, appreciative of that mentality, that we're now working alongside of our teachers and really encouraged to do that. And that's been a piece that I think aligns well with us. A lot has changed. If you'd ask an educator right now, a lot has changed on their plate, and there was some overwhelmness to begin with. And I think there still is some in certain places and with certain people, but I think as they're starting to understand this process and seeing what's happening, they're starting to buy in even more. And I think they're really seeing that a lot of these things that we used to have to do separately from Q Comp goals and portfolios and observations and all these things, we're really starting to try to weave that all into one process. And we're really focusing on maybe a specific process, like Ms. Manders mentioned, you know, interacting with the learning target. Some people are really focusing on that work and digging in, and we'll be talking about those things tomorrow morning at our strategy CLTs. And so that's all fitting into our evaluation process, too. And so really, there's all these things that are kind of all coming together, and after being here for a few years, it really feels good to start to see that to happen. And I think we were primed for that and having the right leadership that we have right now to help us move forward, and that has really been appreciative. So kudos to Dr. Bernard and Superintendent Babcock for that leadership. Our non-tenured teachers are still doing, there are three evaluations every year. We're still getting into the rooms. In fact, most of us are starting the second round here kind of this week and probably get some done before the holiday break and probably finish those up right after. The first one that we had, we only focused on one thing, and that was classroom environment. What we're focusing on now is actually the classroom instruction, so actually the structure of the lesson, the strategies that they're using to get kids engaged with the learning. And then the last one that we'll do with our non-tenured faculty is around planning, and so looking at how they're planning and then how they work that plan. And they will have to deviate from their plans. They do every day. And so it used to be we would do all of those components each time. Now this time, we're able to focus much more and give much more intentional feedback to our faculty in those areas. And so that's a shift that our non-tenured faculty are working with. And our tenured faculty have some options now. We've developed some options for them to do evaluation process. No longer is it just you have to do the standard process of pre-meeting, we'll come watch, post-meeting, fill out a form, done. It's now much more, while that original process or traditional process is still an option, we've been able to give them other options that still meet state statute, meet with our Q Comp requirements, but also are maybe helpful in them thinking outside the box a little bit. So for example, there's one that's based really on instructional planning. So if an educator really wanted to take time and dig deep into a whole unit and replan and be really intentional about incorporating some of these quick writes and some of these different Avid strategies we're trying to put into place, they could be very intentional about that, and that would be a process that we would work alongside of them. There's another one where they would be observing and reflecting with colleagues, and I'm really pushing for faculty to do that. I really want, let's say, for my second grade teacher to go observe a second grade colleague in Montgomery, and maybe the next day, go observe a second grade colleague in Lonsdale, and really look at how are we implementing the new math curriculum? Or how are we working with professional, or excuse me, with student management, if that's an area that they want to focus on? And so we're really hoping that some of our tenured faculty take advantage of that, and we'll find subs somewhere to help cover those classes. Thin air, maybe, but we'll find them. There's other options like extended coaching cycles and some, I think we have, what, six different options? And so we're excited that some of those are there, and really, it's a little bit teachers being able to choose their own process to work alongside of us and us being more flexible and helping either coach along the way or just facilitate conversations or getting them out and seeing other people teach, not just us watching them. So those are some of the fun things that we're seeing, you know, district-wide, but also specifically on our K through 8 buildings, and I'm sure Allen will have some things to share here about the high school, too. So before we step away, was there any questions for any of us before we turn it over to secondary?
No, just keep doing the work. You guys are fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, school board. Superintendent Babcock, they stole a lot of the thunder, I'll be honest, because we are so lined up, K-12 now. Lisa and Jeff talked about the PD SA process. I've got three, year three, tenured faculty, and I'm in my building, so to piggyback off of what Jeff said, four of them have picked the, a traditional evaluation process, but three are trying one of the other five new options that they can select. So two of actually have decided to wait until spring semester. Terry Squires, who we all know, she's got a student teacher that's coming in, and she's going to work with her student teacher and have that be part of her evaluation process. So I would echo what Tony and Jeff and Lisa said. Dr. Bernard has brought some new ideas. Kevin Babcock has added to what we've done, and it's much more aligned now and feels pretty good. I'm going to jump back to Halloween. Halloween, we had a blood drive here, and once again, we hit our goal by one, which is fantastic. Some of the board members may know that every year, the Red Cross, if we hit a certain threshold of pints donated, then they kick money our way into student scholarships, then we give scholarships away. So we've got our next drive coming up during the holiday break here, December 29th, I believe. So if anybody wants to lay on that bed and give a pint, you're more than welcome to. But I chose Halloween just because around that time, both our FFA, our National Honor Society, they go out and do food collection. They do food drives, they go trick-or-treating for food, and then we split that all up and get it to all three of the food shelves in our communities. Our FFA also does a corn drive where they go talk to farmers. This year, they brought the farmers a nice little lunch meal, and then those farmers that could and would, they would donate corn. Our FFA members take that into the elevator, get it weighed, and the money that they get, they send off to Camp Courage. We've also got our student council, they went up and volunteered at the marathon up in the Twin Cities at the water stations. They get up early, very early on that weekend, which I've got a daughter who moaned and groaned about the time they had to get out of bed and take a bus up. But what I'm trying to share is we have young people that do so much service and so much giving back in this school building. Even our life skills students, they fill our vending machines here. And Chris knows this because he's a, because he's a Lonsdale Lion, but our Alliance Club has been collecting plastic bags, and now the scouts in Lonsdale have to. And part of the plastic from the wrap on the different beverages become part of that. There's a company in Michigan called Trex.com, and they collect this plastic bags and turn it back into furniture and park benches and decking. So every 500 pounds, and people ask me, how many plastic bags does it make 500 pounds? Hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands. So between the Lonsdale Lions and the Lonsdale Scouts, we have collected now 2,150 pounds. So we've got four free benches that have been shipped to Lonsdale. We're working on our fifth one. But even TCU High School is a part of that. Our high school kitchen staff saves all the bags that they have the food shipped in. They stuff it in the bag, and I drag it home and make sure I go through and pull all the little labels off, but that's how simple people can take part in different projects like that. Next week, our four Avid sections go to Feed My Starving Children up in the Twin Cities, and we'll bag hundreds and hundreds of meals, and they'll come back here exhausted and expect me to buy them all pizza. That's just how it works. I want to thank the board. I want to thank the board. Superintendent Babcock shared that the board once again has gone forward with allowing every junior to take the ACT test. Not all of them do, but the opportunity is there so that one big roadblock factor of cost has been taken away. So, once again, thank you, board, for that. We've been doing that for a number of years at this point. We actually have our ACT online practice test on Wednesday in two days. So we'll close down the G Wing once again. We'll have 150, 140 to 150 juniors all taking the practice test. And for most of them, this is the first time ever that they've taken a timed test. MCAs, you can take as long as you want to take. The ACT, it's, you know, you start here and you end here. It's all-time stuff. And that'll start getting us ready. I appreciate the community ed, which puts on the ZAPS presentation about four weeks prior to the actual test. Those students that want to pay for that for ACT prep. We do prep throughout the school year. We have teachers that embed ACT questions in the work that students do so they get familiar with what kind of test questions are happening. And we'll take that test that first week in May. Fall sports, I do want to recognize Dante Ojabarian. He went off to the state cross-country tournament this year. And just a couple of weeks ago, Ella Schmizing, her second trip up to the swimming state meet. Those were our two fall folks there. We've got a special group who that's getting recognized as soon as I close my mouth and move on. Veterans Day program, we had a great show once again. I do, I was honored to be able to talk to Andy Waggenscheid at our luncheon that day. That was the last time I had a conversation and I spoke to Mary on Saturday, but it was neat for me. Andy didn't work with me or under me or for me, but the first day since I came to Montgomery-Lonsdale back in the day, Andy and his wife stopped in during that very first week to welcome me to Montgomery-Lonsdale. And he will be missed. He was a fantastic man, fantastic man. Our conferences are nothing like the elementary and conferences. We average 20 to 25% of parents that show up, depending on the grade level. It's a traditional system, hence even tonight was our first night of the two-hour personalized conferences that piggyback off of our spring semester. But three, four, five years ago, we worked through the meet and confer committee and we broke up two hours in December and an hour and a half in, I'm in March, where the teachers tell me what time they plan to make phone calls, send emails to really those students who are in that D range or failing the course right now. We had four weeks left in quarter two fall semester and it's amazing how quickly this fall semester has flown by. Kevin and I, we actually met today and started planning for 2023-24, looking at staffing, looking at courses, looking at the career pathways. Nothing slows down. It's just constant movement throughout the school year. I think it was Tony that mentioned the concerts that are happening now. The high school concert is next Monday, 7 o'clock in the Performing Arts Center. If you want to come on out and listen to some wintertime music, it'll be good, very, very good. The band and choir and the jazz bands will be playing on that stage. I covered online. Oh, this Thursday, I'm actually with Ms. Irwin. We're taking a group of 20 Titans juniors and seniors to Northfield for the Yay 22 Winter Student Summit. It's amazing what topics these young people talk about. We kind of stand against the wall. They get in groups. This involves TCU, WEM, Northfield, and the Faribault High Schools. And each high school brings 20 students, about 80 students there. And the student leaders this year are from Northfield, so they've got the agenda planned. But it's a chance for our students to talk with other high schools to find out how they're dealing with, for instance, dropping out of high school and lower graduation rates and how to get students to go to class, how to help take care of the vaping problem that every high school has right now. So it'll be a good day on Thursday. The 2023-24 TCU High School Course Guidebook is getting worked on. Staff will be looking at that Wednesday during CLT time. And, oh, the Titan Pride Program. You know, we did a revamping Pride in Self, Pride in Others, Pride in Umm Community. We had another wonderful donation from Waste Management, $31,000 check, which if any of you are on my Twitter page, every Friday, we draw 10 random names out of the box from the commons and those students get to come down and pick some prizes to take home and get a picture out there and publicize the ticket process, which teachers and staff can write a student up for on a positive basis. So that program is going well. And any questions? Thanks for the time tonight, board.
Thank you.
I think they're all still here. So I just want to thank the principal admin team for speaking this evening. I feel that they're working really well together. They're very passionate about what's going on right now. They also had to go through some change and some learning moments to accommodate, you know, Mr. Bernard is going to come up. But they've also had to adjust some things and make some fun changes for the better, as you can hear. I think their capacity to work with the teachers down the road will show up more than just the old checkoff system of giving a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 and then just not really having any conversations. And I've noticed a lot of that already as far as their mindfulness walking around the buildings and their mindfulness of looking at classrooms and watching what's happening in the classrooms versus just walking by. So the work that they're doing should not go unnoticed. And if anybody needs to contact them, they should just reach out to find out more of what we're doing and how we're doing it, to explore how we're aligning 12 down to E and E back up to 12 is the way we're looking at it. Obviously, our students all end up at the high school, so we're looking at how that model flows all the way up and down the system so that when our kids, our students do get to the high school, that they are well-equipped. And that's why I keep bringing up the middle school model because that's a big piece of it, a couple of our principals. Jeff and Lisa have the middle school students and they have to work with Alan to bridge that gap. You'll see some probably fifth and sixth grade models being a part of the seventh and eighth grade as we maybe look at calling fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Our fifth and sixth are looking at two as far as how we do a little middle school model within fifth and sixth grade. So we may have one teacher teaching math in all fifth and sixth grade, one teaching English in all fifth and sixth grade, and so on within the core areas, which will give the students more engaged environment within the classroom. As a teacher, they're more probably knowledgeable within an area versus students being with a teacher and getting a little bit less experience because maybe a fifth grade teacher, I'm not as knowledgeable, let's say, in math. So you're going to see a lot more coming forward with them. And I can't speak enough about my admin team, the principals, and actually what they're doing right now. So I'm going to give them a quick little shout-out as they're still all sitting back there. And just a couple of our quick things and then we'll move along. I've been meeting with Southwest Metro, who is the co-op that we work with for our special education. Darren Kermez, the superintendent, and Melanie Crane, the director of Sped Services from Southwest Metro, came out last week to meet myself and Shelley Volbritt at the primary building. We are looking at the primary building to potentially suffice Level 3 students that are in need, especially in the middle age category, fifth through eighth grade, because there really isn't anything available. And typically, we're trying to figure out if we should do something with the hours for that particular student or if we need to move them up into a higher level. Most of them, they'll qualify upper level and they were not doing service to the students. So Southwest Metro came out to look at our primary facility to see if there's a way that we could make something work to do some sort of agreement with them, some sort of lease agreement. Wasika also has a lease agreement with them for more of Level 4 students with some Level 3 in there. So I want to be reaching out to them to find out more about how that lease works. Right now, Southwest Metro is extremely excited because the facility at this point would work. We'd have to make a few modifications, working with Eric to find out if we're ADA compliant and make sure that the building is suitable for what we need to do there. I will give and present more information on that as I find out more. But it really looks really promising. We have 19 students in our district that are Level 3 students. Six of those are elementary. We'll probably move elementary over there too if this does become an agreement. And with that being said, that they provide us with the staff, not us, with that program, the staff, but allows our students to stay in district. We don't have to figure out a way to transport students except for from one of our buildings to another of our facilities, but we don't have to figure out how to move them out of our district. I think it's important that we keep our students within our own district. And I think the parents would appreciate that their student was actually here with us. It also supports the need of the primary building where we can actually use the primary building to help our students. And at the same time, as the program starts potentially and/or if it grows, we are also going to accommodate any other students in the area that also cannot find places to go, which maybe down the road, that that building would be a central hub to this area. So New Richland, Wasika, Masur Henderson, Waterville, Lees and Moorestown, so on and so forth, where those students then would have a closer place to go. Right now, a lot of students, most students have to go all the way up to Carver County and it's a cost. So really excited, that visit was really, really, really exciting for me. As I was continually thinking about our 19 students that might have the potential capacity to stay with us here at TCU versus taking a long ride every day and then having to come back. So I will keep us updated on that. Another thing that I've been working on is our webpage, is that is our most upfront piece of communication for everybody in the district. So I've just been working with some other companies to find out how our teachers, our staff can use a website more efficiently and more easily. The current one is good, but it doesn't allow our staff to really update as we go through each day. And just being able to see it on your cell phone more easily and then having more calendars that are more accessible for people to look at. We really need to keep that webpage, I guess, more vibrant and really just promote who we are. And right now, we're stuck. Just in case people are listening, we have been working on trying to update the new one. It's been a process. So keep being patient, we'll eventually get there. But I'd like to see it done faster than how long it's been taken. So I'll keep working on that part. We also, David Bernard, Shelley and I have been working on American Indian Education Aid funding from the state. So each October 1st, school districts can report out a number of American Indians that are within the district. Prior to October 1st, 2021, we did not meet the 20 criteria, thinking we'd have 20 students to receive some funding. This past year, or not this past year, October 1st, 2021, we had 27. So we actually met the threshold. So David Bernard has been working on that funding piece of the puzzle. All they're asking for now is just our roster. And once that's submitted, we will pretty much receive the $22,506 that we will put towards some curriculums for maybe some of our primary classrooms or near upper classrooms that would incorporate some of the American Indian education pieces. We'll be forming a committee to have those folks look at those curriculums and actually have a conversation so that we can make sure we, I guess, educate our American Indian students that we have in-house, that we take care of them. And then we'll be looking at possibly funding a four-hour type person that will actually check in with those students through all that funding and through that money. So really excited that we'll actually potentially be getting this funding to help those students as well. So I'm really excited. October 1st, 2022, we have 30 students that reported. So it looks like we'll have a couple of years here for sure where we could get some funding coming in. So really excited about that, that we've been working on that. And the last thing is, I'll talk about is alternative delivery of specialized instructional services, which is called ATSS. It's another funding program from the state. And that really is the extra support for academic behavioral support that's needed throughout the district. And so, with the, I guess, creative mindfulness of filling out the paperwork for this ATSS program, we can figure out a way to maneuver some of our staff into an ATSS program at the same time potentially adding some staff on so that we can help the needs of some of our students that have some behavioral and some academic adjustments that we can't overly take care of now. So with the potential add-on of that, we will be able to support more students, potentially add on some more staff, especially maybe in that social-emotional area where students are really needing the extra help right now and potentially relieving some of our counselors to be able to work more with the educational piece versus the social-emotional piece. So that's another thing that, or another program that I'll keep us updated on. That's a pretty significant program and there's quite a few dollars tied to that. So Gene and David, Gene Kelp and David Bernard are working on some creative ways to finagle that staffing piece of it because if we call certain staff certain things, it falls within ATSS, so there may be some name-changing. People will still be doing pretty much the same thing, but it's just some creative ways to maneuver some staff around to make that funding work. Just upfront, it's a cost, but actually it gets paid for. It's always kind of a year behind. So as we go through the process, we'll see some budgetary things go a little bit up, but over time, it'll take care of itself. And while I'm thinking about that, we'll go backwards real quick and then I'll stop. Back to the Southwest Metro, if the lease does happen and there's some changes that get made, those changes get wrapped into the lease and then Southwest Metro wraps them into that lease, so it actually gets paid for too. So there may be some extra upfront things there, but the costs actually get drilled into the lease. So really exciting. So a lot of good things happening. Once again, I can't thank the admin team enough. And I can't thank the rest of the district admin team for putting together these funding dollars that we're potentially having coming at us. So really exciting for the district that we've got some really cool programs that are going to help our kids in need.
All right, thank you, thank you. Next, I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Dale Bass, second by Kevin Huber, to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 7-0. Next, under our consent agenda, we have our approval of our minutes from our November 14th regular school board meeting and November 28th, special school board meeting. Under personnel, employment ending. Andres Hernandez, TCU Lee Center. Jill Casper, TCU Lonsdale. Kyle Krueger, our C-Squad volleyball coach. Jana Wondra, Kids Zone Coordinator District-wide. And Amber Hack, Kids Zone, TCU Lee Center. Under new hires, we have Janet Yonlin, long-term sub, TCU Lonsdale. Mary Arret, paraprofessional, TCU Montgomery. Kylie Moxa, volunteer dance coach. Kyle Krueger, head girls soccer coach. Tony Barnak, assistant wrestling coach. Under leave of absence, we have Michaela Simon, TCU Montgomery. Danielle Glenn, TCU Montgomery. Alma Strata, TCU Lee Center. Alexa Iverson, District-wide. Helen Charan, TCU Montgomery. Stacy Lynn Bloom, TCU High School. Under seniority lists, we have our 22-23 teacher tenured seniority list, our 22-23 teacher non-tenured seniority list, our 22-23 secretaries seniority list, a lot of S's here, our 22-23 custodian seniority list, and our 22-23 paraprofessional seniority list. We have approval of bills in the amount of $819,532.66. Also, our finance report. I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, second by Chris Velasquez, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, 7-0. Next, we have our open forum. And I believe there has not been any requests to speak to the board this evening. So next, we'll move on to board member recognition. We have a board member that has filled two terms, so he's been here on the school board for eight years. And so, we kind of would like to recognize Dale Bass as his years of service. And foregoing the traditional bell that we usually do for our school board members, he has decided to donate the money that would be for the bell to donate books back to one of our libraries at the TCU Lee Center School. And each of these books, it looks like they're wilderness ones, there's seven different ones, but in the front of the book, they all say, "This book is to honor the years of service Dale Bass has dedicated to the Tri-C United School Board from 2015 to 2022." So that will always be in the front of all of these. So again, thank you, Dale, for all of you done. You've been a big part and a trickle part of many decisions that we've made since TCU has started and some really big ones.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. It's been a fun serving, right?
Yay! Is there anything that you would like to... Is there anything that you would like to say or add or?
No, I, no, I look forward to, for you, for the next few years coming. I think TCU is certainly moving forward in many, many areas. I think there's going to be some thoughtful decisions that are going to have to be made in the next couple of years, and I think everyone needs to be willing to listen and continue to think about the students and moving to their way forward.
Perfectly said. Thanks Dale.
Thanks Dale.
And thank you again for all of your years of. And we have some other recognitions this evening too for our Titan Pride Awards, and I think Lane is here to present those.
Thank you. It's been a while since we've been able to come here since the pre-pandemic, so it's actually, it's nice to get back. Just to give you guys a little bit of history here, we are in about our fifth year or so of our Special Olympic program, and we are one of, I believe, eight or nine in the state that are ran by a school district. Typically, they're like a standalone nonprofit, so that's kudos to our, our district for actually having our own Special Olympic program. So we have, of course, we have our bowlers that we'll recognize here in a bit, polyhockey, unified volleyball, swimming, and bocce ball. So we offer five, five sports a year. Unified volleyball is not technically a part of Special Olympic, but we treat it, we treat it the same. So anyway, so we have a handful of people we're going to recognize. First of all, we have Melissa Bell. She is our friendship adventure slash Special Olympics coordinator, so a big kudos to Melissa. She is also technically called our head delegate when it comes to Special Olympics, so when we get paperwork and other things like that. Absolutely. So they are big, big helpers all the time. They, they volunteer their time, and we had our biggest bowling group we ever had this year. We had 16, 16 bowlers, which typically we have eight, nine historically. Right now, we just started a polyhockey group, and typically it's, you know, that eight, nine, we have what, 17, 18?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I just ordered 10 brand-new hockey sticks today for bowlers. Eventually, Lisa's going to start, Lisa's going to start recognizing that some of her polyhockey sticks are missing, and I'm going to hear it.
Happy to share.
Yeah, happy to share for now, but anyway, so traditionally what we've done is we've, you know, just kind of read out our athletes and they've come up, and then we'll. Quite a few weeks of bowling. And then on November 2nd, which was a Saturday, they went up to the state meet, and we had some people that placed, we bussed a few athletes from the center up to the, up to the meet, so we had a, had a fantastic time. So not all of our athletes were able to join us, but we're going to recognize all of them regardless if they are here or not. So if they want to come up after we announce it, it'd be fantastic.
And Lane, if they're comfortable enough, we'd like them to come around and shake the hands of the board members too, if they're more than willing to do so.
So how about we get them all up here, but maybe with all these quarters, we walk them around the outside?
Absolutely.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. First place, state bowling, Reddick Volley. Reddick?
He's so excited.
First place, Joshua Stanhobin. And Reddick here is wearing one of our new jerseys, by the way, so that's good. You may recognize this next guy, he's one of our local celebrities, but second place, state bowling, John Carson. Not in all the fashion we wear in his medal.
Nice.
So you got a kind of a look there. Here you go, John. Fantastic job.
I love it.
Third place, state bowling, Kathleen Russell. Third place, state bowling, Julia Drobnik. So I went to actually to a couple of these practices. They're really good. If I can break 100, I'm lucky, and I'm like watching some of them. I don't think Daniel Barnak was able to join us today, but Daniel got fourth place, so we'll thank him. And second place also was Anna Paddock, and she, for those of you that remember, Paddocks that used to, used to work here, they lived at Hutchinson, and they don't have a Special Olympics program that we do, so they actually brought her here for bowling. That's a, and of course, she wanted to be with a friend, so Anna Paddock also got second place, so.
Actually, Lane, I think it might be easier. We come, we'll come to them.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll come this way. We'll make a full circle.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Congratulations, guys.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Nice job. Congratulations.
Do you want to do it right here? Okay. Well, that's, we give them together for the picture for the paper, right here, like right over here?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lane.
Thanks, everyone, for your support and all of that. It's great.
Do you want to for John?
All right, you guys, we're going to move on to our informational items, and first up is our Big South, Big South Conference.
I'll talk about that real quick. Chad Johnson will actually be doing a full presentation at our workshop on January 24th. But just a heads up that we are looking at going through the Big South Conference. Teams in that are Bluer of the area, Fairmont, Jackson County Central, Laverne, Marshall, New Ulm, let's see, Redwood Valley, St. James area, St. Peter, Wasika, Wyndham, Worthington, I think I missed Pipestone. And if we join, that would be number 14. Conference is very unique, like somebody to involve with the conversation, but conference is very unique because they depending on sports and locations divide things into north and south, and then west and east. And if we join, there may be a couple other schools in our immediate area that are also, they'll potentially think about it. So competition-wise and just the feasibility for our students to see the types of schools our size, that conference is a better fit, in my opinion. And so when we look to move towards that, there's a lot of talking that goes into that. And obviously, the transportation is always the biggest piece, but as far as us having to go to Pipestone, it's seldom, and it's on occasion. So for us to be in a conference where it's a, it's a demographic situation where it's similar to us, it just makes more sense. And if you look at the QR rating system, and we're playing schools smaller than us in our own division, and depending on what happens, let's just say we lose and our QRF was down based on going to the playoffs, and so the new conference would be something that would be pretty beneficial. But I'll let Chad Johnson get that bullshit deal as to what that looks like. I know, I think Trevor joined him at the last.
Yeah, I did, and I mean, we will talk about this at the work session, but yeah, they actually have an east and a west and a big and a small.
A big and a small.
Big and a small and east and west. So there's, there's schools, like you said, Pipestone, that, Laverne, that we would basically never go to except once every 14 years because of one act play where each, can we, each school hosts. So there's several of them schools that we would never go to. The biggest thing now, most of our sports play these teams in non-conference games, so now they're going to turn around to conference games, and our closer schools can now become our non-conference. So it's really not going to change too much. Football doesn't change a thing. We're already in set for football. Yes, there's going to be a few times where we're going to be going to Marshall because they are in the, we're considered one of the big schools. But yeah, looking, the Minnesota River Conference is somewhat falling apart, well, plane's about to lose, or leave, once they leave.
Where are they going?
We do, don't know. Sounds possibly the Wright County, Wright County Conference. But that hasn't really, they're, they're not out for sure. But if they do leave.
Well, it takes us one school to leave.
Especially them, because they're the only ones close to us right now in enrollment. Well, plane leaves, then we're way bigger than the rest of the schools.
That's not close.
Well, and a lot of those schools too, being in the initial meeting that we had, we were playing them in section play regardless, so it would only enhance the programs way more than what it already is.
We went to Marshall, is there any regard for football?
Yep. Virginia, yeah, because, well, the JV and C-Squad did, yep.
One of the connotations that I had with Chad about it is, is actually soccer, in the fact that a lot of those schools have soccer, and we're not going to Forest Lake and we're not going to Rochester, we can come up with a schedule, you know, and so scheduling, you know, probably will end up being a, a more positive thing from our activities point.
Soccer, swimming, with none of these, the Minnesota River Conference doesn't recognize those as sports right now. Dance is another one that the Big South does recognize. They have a conference meeting.
And you said too, the one act play is probably the more beneficial one for us because we can't find teams in our conference that have one act play.
They have a bunch of cool things that I'm sure Chad will touch on. Obviously, the cons is, is some traveling, but again, we all, we do that now, it seems like in most sports, so it's not going to change it too much.
This is getting in the weeds, what will be the timeline?
Uh, not this.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Was it twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes. Next year, 23, 24 will be Minnesota River Conference.
Only because they're already scheduling for the 23, 24.
I think, I think during a contract possibly. It might be a contract till then.
Anything else, any other questions, comments? All right, enrollment.
Enrollment, so we are currently at 1,859 students across the district, same number as November. From the beginning of the year, we're down 13 students, variety of reasons, some have, some have left. We actually had a few students not graduate that actually dropped out early, but nothing too dramatic, just some families have moved out. So we're staying really consistent as to where we're at, and it's interesting that TCU Montgomery is getting closer and closer to matching high school in size. So, yeah, so enrollment's staying very consistent, so good to know.
Okay, committee updates, finance.
All right. Finance committee, back on November 28th, our discussion included fiscal year '22 results and audit, worked on the pay 23 levy, which Jean presented tonight. Always discussion around 2022, 23 enrollment update, and then just looking out for the future enrollment, what's our future enrollment going to look like as well, so that's about it.
Lots of good things. All right, next we'll move on to new business, and first up, we have our donations for the month.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 2905 accepts with appreciation the following donations and permits their use as designated by the donors, waste management for high school student supplies, $3,100.
I'll need a second.
I'll second.
This is a, a resolution, so this will be roll call vote. The resolution has been introduced by Chris Velasquez, second by Kevin Huber. Dale?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Rush says a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Our resolution has been approved by roll call vote, seven zero. Next, we have another resolution that would be for the certify of the final 22 payable 23 levy.
Whereas pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the School Board of Tri-City United School District, Montgomery, Minnesota, is authorized to make the following proposed tax levies for general purposes. Maintenance or general fund, $2,739,945.52. Community service, $158,608.6. Debt services, $4,548.3. Total proposed tax levy, $7,439,101.61. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Tri-City United School District, Montgomery, Minnesota, that the levy to be levied in 2022 to be collected in 2023 is set at $7,439,101.61.
I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Our resolution introduced by Chris Velasquez, second by Dale Bass, to certify the final 22 payable 23 levy, this will be roll call vote. Dale?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Rush says a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Resolution has passed by seven zero roll call vote. As of right now, we are going to be closing our meeting for superintendent evaluation, so we'll have to ask everyone to leave. Thanks for coming.
I have to talk to, just a second.
Okay, but I need to seek a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chris Velasquez, second by Kevin Huber to close the meeting for superintendent evaluation at 7:07 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero.